Order and ask David to give us prayer, and I think we also had a request from Judge Lily to pray for him.
Thank you, Mayor Prokhem Captain. It's good to be with you as always. May God bless you and keep you and cause his face to fall upon you and give you peace. Doctor Paul Willey, about two minutes ago, went under the knife for triple bypass surgery in the Metroplex, one of the later hospitals. He asked especially that we say a prayer for him as close to nine, except, yeah, as close to nine o'clock as possible. And we want to wish him our good wishes and pray for his outcome. Let's pray we'll go all the way through the prayers and then come back to do the pledge, if that's all right, Judge.
Sure.
Father, we just come to you in Jesus' name and we lift Paul up to you, Father. Lord, we pray that your angels overshadow him. Father, we pray that you would touch him. We pray to Chief Guide, the doctors, the nurses, all of those, Lord, that will be participating in any way in Judge Lilly's operation this morning. Father, we pray that he comes to the operation fine, that there's no glitches, that there is perfect healing, Lord God, and he heals well. And so, Father, we just thank you for Paul. We ask you to bless him, bless his family. We ask these things in Christ Jesus' name. Amen. If you would stand and do the prayer, I'm sorry, or do the pledge, followed by this pledge. I'll get it right in a minute. Do the pledge, followed by the Lord's Prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but to the rest from evil, for thine is the kingdom, power, glory, and forever. Amen. And now, my good Lord, bless you and keep you, cause his face to fall upon you, and give you peace, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, gentlemen. As always.
Thank you, Dave Barrett. I'm unaware if anybody signed up for citizens comments. Consideration and approval of minutes from the September fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting?
I move we approve the minutes from September fourteenth, as presented by the county clerk.
All in favor? Thank y'all. We don't have a treasurer's audit report, I don't think, do we? Okay. We'll do the bill toward the end. So, we'll go straight into the set agenda, consideration of approval of action regarding the following. Item A is the action regarding the burn ban. I'm still good with leaving it off right now. Not sure if anything is for it.
I think we should stay off.
So, we'll take no action on item A. Lisa's not here for item B. Item C is Ann Carpen, Treasurer, and Jennifer Robertson, Auditor, consideration of possible approval of action regarding opting out of presidential order regarding payroll taxes. Good morning.
Good morning. I love this design.
Maybe.
Okay. The payroll tax parole went into effect on September first, twenty twenty. I have come to the Commissioner's Court to request your decision regarding whether we are going to participate or opt out of this parole. This deferment is deferring the employees-only portion of the social security tax at six point two percent from September first to December thirty first. This is a deferment only, and the employee would have to pay this back from January first to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. That means during that time, the employees would be paying twelve point four percent of social security tax per month. It is recommended that Brown County not participate in any deferment of social security taxes. Any unpaid employee taxes becomes a responsibility of Brown County. Deferring the social security tax is not forgiving taxes, only postponing the collecting of the taxes. Participating in the deferment program will also place a burden on calculating and auditing payroll, as all calculations will have to be marital. For these reasons, we respectfully request that Commissioner's Court decide that Brown County should not participate in the deferment of social security taxes. I have spoken with Jennifer Robertson, our auditor, and Shane Britton, our county attorney on this.
Would you, what, do you like to comment on that yourself? Are you just concurred with what she says, or?
I have made the same suggestion to all of my employers that I do payroll for. There's no guarantee, if an employee leaves before that payroll tax is prepaid, you're stuck with them. It is the employer's choice as to whether or not they participate. And as I've said, I've recommended to all of my employers that they not participate in this program.
I agree.
You have any comment about that?
I agree completely with what she said, but ultimately, it is the employee. And so, if an employee of Brown County opts in, then we will need to, we'll have to, we'll have to follow it.
Everything I've read says that it's the employer's choice as to whether or not they participate. The employer has choice, not the employee.
And the county could not participate, but it can participate.
I understand, man. I guess you're supposed to get those that are in financial distress, but everybody on the county payroll will still receive their full pay, and nobody's been cut back that I know of.
There is a little hint that it might be forgiven at the end, but.
It may be, but it may not be.
That's right. And maybe be retroactive, but I'm in favor of.
At this time, I don't know of any counties who are participating in this. Our software company said that none of theirs are, and they have no programs that they're going to write for this. So, any county that decides to do this, that means the checks have to be calculated manually and typed manually, because you can't run it on their program.
Commissioner Shaw, was that a motion?
Oh, well, I'll make a motion. You don't make a motion where you opt out of payroll reduction.
Have a motion by Shaw. We have a second from Larry Traywick. Any more discussion? All in favor of opting out? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Adam D is Jennifer Robertson, Auditor, Hearing on Proposed Budget. So, we have to declare the hearing open, I presume, at. I guess we're looking for any public comment on the proposed budget. Any takers? I see no one that seems to want to participate. I guess we can close the public hearing at this time, since no one seems to want to discuss it. So, item D has been taken care of. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Shane?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item E is Jennifer Robertson, Auditor, Consideration of Possible Approval of Action Regarding An Adoption of Proposed Budget.
I just need someone to make a motion to adopt the proposed budget with the changes that were initiated based on, you know, changes like, well, like our, the auditors.
But it is, that's still in proposed budget?
Yes, yeah.
Were there any surprises? I mean, because we, so y'all ended up, y'all salary under the date to the same percentage we did, or what?
Josie and Valerie got five percent, I got three.
Okay. All right. That's the only thing I needed to actually hear the answer to. We had the one adjustment on. The incoming district judge, we talked, and then we changed that to where it wasn't.
Yes, sir.
That's almost three things. Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the proposed budget?
I move we adopt the proposed budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Have a motion. Second. Shaw, all in favor. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Item F is.
In the minutes, you were saying that's a record vote, so you.
A record vote, all four.
Or, so the, it needs to be on the face of the.
So, we can do individual?
No. Since you all voted, but it'll, it'll have your individual name that you voted for as a candidate.
Okay.
In that direction of that.
I think that'll be on the cover page of the.
Yeah, that's what I said, on the cover page.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody, everybody agrees with that, I presume? All right. We're ready to go to item F then. Jennifer Robertson, Auditor, Consideration and Possible Approval of Action Regarding The Setting of Salaries of Elected Officials.
These are the salaries. The increases is posted in the paper, plus, you know, all the, except for the district judge, county supplement, I've seen the same.
The attorney just said, let's say, however, twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, y'all voted three.
So, this is the list. They all went the same percentages than the other employees, except for a couple of corrections that had to be done. Is that right?
That's right.
The only thing I see on here is, on the list, is the district attorney, it should say county supplement. But other than that, everything looks correct.
So, you make a motion to adopt the salaries with, with the correction that, oh, same supplement?
I move we adopt the salaries of elected officials, with the exception of adding county supplement to the district attorney.
The wording?
As presented, yeah.
Add the wording county, county supplement to that. We have a motion from him. Have a second from Larry. Any other discussion? All in favor? Is this a record vote, too? It is unanimous, so.
One thing I would like to make clear, though, is the elected officials are not the only county employees that got a raise. Every county employee either got two thousand dollars or five percent, whichever one is greater. It's not just the elected officials.
So noted. All right. All right. We're ready to go to item G, which is, once again, Jennifer Robertson, Auditor, Consideration of Possible Approval, or adoption, I'm sorry, of Proposed Tax Rate.
You all reading a resolution here?
Yeah. I'll be fine. Got a resolution for the tax rate here. Says, whereas Brown County Commissioners Court met in a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court, opened to the public on September twenty-one, twenty twenty, to adopt the tax rate for the fiscal year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and approved the following statements. Brown County property taxes would be increased by the adoption of a total tax rate of zero point five seven seven six. General fund rate is zero point four six seven seven. Debt service is zero point zero one nine three. Road and flood rate, zero point zero nine zero six, for a total tax rate of zero point five seven seven six. This tax rate will effectively raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's rate by one point three two percent. This year's levy to fund maintenance and operations expenditures exceeds last year's maintenance and operation tax levy. Now, therefore, Brown County Commissioners Court does hereby adopt the stated tax rate resolution adopted this twenty-first day of September twenty twenty. I move we adopt this resolution.
Second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Don't?
We have one that's silent.
Okay. We wouldn't get that going around. Jennifer, what was last year's total tax rate?
Point six.
It was point six. Even?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't remember. Yeah, I mean, we're actually, it's the reality of a lower rating than last year, but by the way it's, the way it's calculated, it's.
Lower than the effective rate.
All right. Well, we're, item H is, once again, Consideration of Possible Adoption of Maintenance and Operation Rate.
I move we adopt the maintenance and operations rate of zero point four six seven seven per one hundred dollars valuation.
Second. Have motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? There's that one. The next item is Consideration and Possible Adoption of Debt Service Tax Rate.
I move we adopt debt service rate of zero point zero one nine three per one hundred dollars valuation.
Second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? All right. Consideration of Possible Adoption of Road and Flood Tax Rate.
I move we adopt the road and flood tax rate of zero point zero nine zero six per one hundred dollars valuation.
Second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Item K is Consideration and Ratification of, for year, what, uh?
Fiscal year.
What's FY?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year?
Total rate.
I've never seen it expressed that way. Nine thirty twenty-one tax rate.
Is this necessary, Shane?
What? I'm sorry.
Item K.
Jennifer had a reason she says.
So, you, you did all of them and do individually?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, then you don't need to do the total. You said the three, you said the.
It's redundant, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Because we adopted the tax rate on, on, on G. Ratification is.
Of course, it wouldn't hurt anything if you just adopted.
It doesn't, doesn't really matter.
The adoption on G and then K is a ratification, which to me would be.
That's, that's, that's fine. Go ahead and do it.
Still a ratification.
I think.
And the five seven seven six, that's what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I move we ratify the proposed tax rate of.
On zero point, zero point.
Zero point five seven seven six for fiscal year ending nine thirty twenty-one.
Second. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? That one's done. Item L was Judge Lily, County Judge, Consideration of Possible Approval of Action Regarding The County Personnel Changes. I do not know what that is. I don't have a copy of that. I have nothing on that. Were you aware of anything?
They're the. They're the.
Cleaner, the disinfecting.
She has the forms on her desk. I gotta go.
Will, what's going, Will? While you're doing that, we'll go to. We'll go to item M while she's looking for those, which is Consideration of Possible Approval of Action Regarding The Agreement Between Brown County, Allison Bass, and McGee, LLP, in reference to, in reference, in reference of redistricting of Brown County.
We approved this agreement back in eighteen, when, I don't, I really don't think there's any need to take any action on it, other than paying the first installment of five thousand dollars. I've got the letter here, if you'd like to change.
Which will go through, not until October.
October thirty-one.
So, there's gonna be a payment of five thousand, maybe?
So, they originally, there was an agreement?
Yes. I, I give you the date.
Okay.
It's executed the thirtieth day of July, twenty eighteen.
And this is the, the first payment, five thousand?
Five thousand. And it could be the only payment. It could be the only payment, if we don't have to, if they don't have to do any major redistricting. So.
So, all you're dealing is just to free them to pay the first payment.
Well, Jennifer said it's not gonna go through until October.
So, there's really nothing.
There, I don't believe there's any action that needs to be taken now.
We're gonna pass on this item M, is that what you're saying?
We'll just read that, Jen, then.
Okay. And we need to probably include, include the word payment.
No action, sir.
If we're gonna pay money, we need to put payment somehow on there next time. So, no action on the M. Back to L. Item L, which is a consideration of possible approval of action regarding the county personnel changes. We have, it's not saying who they replaced, but we have Sherry Mosley, beginning date of nine fourteen twenty twenty, twelve dollars an hour, which they are part of the maintenance crew that have to do the disinfecting of the courthouse. And they're replacing someone, but I don't have that information here.
It's on the bottom.
It is on the bottom?
They're replacing, yeah.
It is, you're right. At the same rate, whose date was, they put on nine, or no longer was on nine eleven, so. And the other one is Gabrielle Slager, at twelve dollars an hour, beginning nine eight of twenty twenty. She's replacing Cindy Graham, who left us eight twenty-one, from twenty to twelve an hour. So, they're both the same, same hourly figure, and they're replacing the two that left. Is there a motion to approve these?
And they're to be paid with COVID funds.
Oh, they are to be paid with COVID funds, as were the other ones. Is there a motion to approve those two changes in personnel? I'll make the motion to approve the two changes, personnel changes. Any other discussion?
One is down the better job, one is down the new job. One of them's already been working.
Wait, so, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Item M is Daryl Johnson, Emergency Management Coordinator, Consideration of Possible Approval of Action Regarding A Request For Reimbursement Of Money For Firefighting Phone Used On Oilfield Tank Battery Fire On September second, twenty twenty, on FM twenty-four ninety-two, for the following amounts. Lake Greenwood Bridge Volunteer Fire Department, three, three hundred and sixty-one dollars twenty-two cents, and Greenwood Fire Department, one thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
Yes, sir. During that lightning storm, a phone came through, a second, a tank battery fire. The volunteer departments don't carry much of the flash fee phone that's used for high degree fires, so they called for Greenwood to respond with their phone. Had a request from Chief X for reimbursement for their phone they used. And also, the bridge fire department used two buckets of theirs, that's reimbursement. I did talk to the property or the lease owner, and he's willing to reimburse, but he says he's a small operator, doesn't have insurance on his lease or anything. He'd like to pay like two fifty down and make a stallace. So, I visited with Josie in the officer's office. She said, we hadn't really run across this before, so, I want to see how y'all are handling that, and we're gonna see if we can reimburse it from the last order.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, while we weren't talking to the, whoever owns the actual tanks. And so, they're wanting to pay it out?
Right. He wants to pay like two fifty down and fifty a month.
So, I don't remember ever reimbursing any fire department for their call.
We bought tires for one time, but we gave those apartments pretty good over the last two years.
Well, I would suggest, may I suggest that we, as we get the money, disperse it to them at that, at that point, if the property or the tank owner's gonna pay us back, as he pays us, we pay them, if he wants us to go through us, which it probably needs to go through, Jennifer has it up and handled, probably needs to go through one of them to get it done.
We all wanna be responsible for keeping up the fifty dollar amount.
Okay. You said two fifty, you said two hundred and fifty down?
Two fifty down.
Fifty a month.
That'll take.
He said, probably won't be able to raise that.
I don't know. I don't think the county, if the guy that wanted to pay for it, I don't think the county should be paying for that, but as far as how it handled it, coming out of this mountain, I don't know what the county attorney says.
That's a commissioner's decision, it's not a county attorney's.
Well.
You don't have any legal obligation to pay it, but you're asking.
Well.
And I agree, I don't wanna, we don't wanna get into the credit business.
All right.
Keeping up. I move we decline the request for reimbursement on the firefighting.
Have a motion?
No. Do you have to have a motion or just no action?
No action.
No action.
Well, yeah, and as far as figuring out who gets, I don't know. She said she don't wanna be involved in us being, in the payment plan. Who's gonna be responsible?
What's changed about, we don't want to get involved in credit?
I understand.
So, just no action? No action?
Unless somebody makes a motion to prove that there will be no action.
You can go back to the, to the tank battery owner, and tell him he can pay the city and the, and the, I guess it was at the dam? Fire department?
No, the bridge.
Bridge. Bridge Fire Department directly, and take care of it that way if he wants to.
And he probably, he probably needs to pay the volunteer fire department first, until they get made whole, and then worry about the city. The city, yeah, he's got a little deeper.
Would you be willing to tab on that to see that it's done? And it's not your job, or you just see, you follow through when you said you would?
Actually, maybe if it worked and so.
Can't understand, I'm not having good insurance. That'd be the worst bill or something.
You think? Just going on what he told me.
Okay. Well, we'll, we have no action.
We didn't pass on that.
We're passing on item N and going to item O, which is, uh, Daryl Johnson, Emergency Management Coordinator, again. Consideration of Possible Approval of Action Regarding Ratification Of Brown County Interlocal Agreement For Dispatch Services.
Okay, this is the final draft that you sent out, have to make some changes.
Last one I have is August twenty-sixth, so you got something near to that, I think?
Yes, sir.
The one I brought down?
I'm at the end of.
Yeah, we dropped this. Right, from Friday.
Well, I was waiting to hear back.
And we were working, we were working on it up until, or Thursday, was that when you brought me that copy?
I was waiting to hear back from you after you made changes.
When did you, you have the best, I mean, talking to.
The week before.
No, you, you brought me something last week. What?
It was the week before.
Yes, but there's the copy, you have the copy from Friday? Yes, but there's the copy, you have the copy from Friday.
So this, this is the, this is the one that's been upgraded.
So there's a main change to it, uh, I'm not sure what the previous ones had, but they added the early fire chief onto the advisory committee, and also, uh, additionally, added me onto it, so, uh, the emergency manager coordinator and sheriff are both on this representative county, uh, Brown County, Brownwood Fire and Police Chief, Early Police Chief, and Baines Police Chief, as well as one volunteer chief here that are on the dispatch.
And so there's, uh, this is the agreement where we're going to start paying for dispatch services, which is, uh, so I don't have any additional information for this here.
And that's a draft, you're going to, it's all going to get mixed up.
So, well, how much money for what, so we don't know what we're floating over here?
Uh, personnel costs, it looked like it came out to $660,000, and the town need to be responsible for 26.3% of that amount.
26.3% of 600, how much?
660, 293.
21%?
26.3%.
That looks like $173,657.06.
And that's on the personnel cost. And there's an equipment and maintenance cost of, it's like $374,000, that's for upgrading the dispatch consoles and some other stuff they're doing in there. There was a grant for $169,989 from the CAG that came off of that, so that brought down to $204,13, $204,013, which, I assume that we've paid 26.3% of that off some.
So what do we budget?
Total, total for Brown, Brownwood is 50.62%. Total for Brown County is 36.9%.
Okay, let's change.
Is that, oh, it's.
Okay, here's, okay.
Because you're adding two, two different items together in there.
Yeah, so it's on page four.
And the total for early is 7.25%. Total for Baines is 4.21%. Total for Blanket is 1.02%. And I don't know what the total.
So how much?
Cost of the project is.
So there's got to be a. There's got to be a reoccurring, part of this is only one time fee, I presume, maybe part is reoccurring. See, it was 26.3. Sharing the cost of dispatch at one point.
Total cost is $908,280 for 2021 and 2020. But you read over this change? You agree with it? The sheriff agreed with it, I, I got an email from him, and agreed with all of the changes.
So once again, now who's paying how much, we're paying how much, Brown County's paying how many dollars this year out of what fund?
Well, it was budgeted.
What is the total amount? Well. Actually, we need some numbers. And then, and we need, I didn't, yeah, I asked, I want the number, still like the number two plus, part of that is like a one, is that part of that a one-time fee?
Yeah, it was a one-time fee.
Okay, so what do we budget that at, a one-time fee? Well, see, this is console, not already included in the initial radio cost, or was it?
Well, yes, sir. The dispatch console was part of the radio agreements.
But was it, was that money included in the radio agreement that we haven't actually done yet? Are we?
I mean, you're the guy that's presenting it, and isn't.
We don't have, we don't.
We don't have the numbers, so we're looking, looking to you for the numbers.
There was a problem with these tables, do we need that filing number?
I think we have to do it before October 1st, because it takes effect October 1st.
Day is the 21st. You know, I need to know, I mean, I feel like we need to know exactly what. Are you, are you going to be, this one-time fee is going to be in which, where, where we could.
Why don't you, why don't you not, why don't we just take a break and figure that?
That's fine.
You got time to draw that out?
You go into this whole thing, let's just, just take a 15-minute break. And it just.
We can do, uh, we can pay bills and some other things, if you would like to, while you're working on that. Jennifer, do you know? And, and that radio funding we talked about, did it include this, I thought?
If somebody could, yes.
Or did it, but did it?
Because all of those consoles, we couldn't have a way to do it.
Well, I guess we could look at the bills while we're waiting on that. I'm looking, I'm looking at mine, I think.
Yeah, I guess. It's, it's really, it's really very straightforward. You look at it, haven't you?
I didn't, I didn't get it.
Well, I just got it in the first minute last week.
Well, it was week four, I had a copy in Tana, and you got it brought to you, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, whenever, whenever that was, whenever.
That was the week?
That's right, she told me she got it from you.
The week, the week before, and that was this one right here, which.
I've got one right here.
Just, I'm talking about this old one, that one, what's that, maybe the same one?
This is the new one.
Okay, but I never did have the new one, I had the old one.
Well, this is the red-letter one. It's got all the changes to it.
And I mean, I'm not saying we don't need to do it, but we need to know what we're talking, which money, which, which fund is what it is, I like that. Okay, we'll go back to item.
Oh, here, you take that, Mike. Thank you.
Item six, consideration of approval of payment of any bills as needed.
I'm not going to pay the bills for any of that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Bills are paid. That only leaves the item that we're discussing, I guess.
Sharon, do you want me to go back and re-top this list and add supplement to it, or just or just write it? And write it, it's better if you like, it's going to be exhibit, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, do you have a resume in front of you?
Okay.
While we're waiting, I'll put it there.
Okay.
So, on item M, we need to make that, we're trying to have the payment. Reworded towards a payment, too. I just put action and payment regarding the agreement, whatever it is, put it back on the agenda.
What's that?
M, go, go back on the agenda, but also.
Yes, I haven't written the re-agenda.
Also include payment.
Yes.
That's the only thing I know of.